Well.
Okay.
Yeah. Let me see, I'm just gonna say. Well, anyway, we're gonna go. I've texted him and called, so I don't know. And I already called this meeting to order at 7:28. So we have approval of the regular meeting minutes of. Oh, boy. May 5th, I'm looking at this different thing over here. Yep, May 5th, which I sent to you.
Yes.
Do you have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
You have any discussion or changes?
They all look good.
Okay. Motion, I will second that, so all in favor? Aye. I have nothing from the tax collector. So I guess I make a motion to table that.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Communications from the public. I don't know, Margaret. Kim Barron, you're our public. Did you have anything that you wanted?
No.
Okay. All right, so we don't.
Thank you, no.
All righty.
Don't have anything, thank you.
Yep. Okay, we have quite a number of commission and board appointments. Now, the Roxbury Museum Board of Trustees. Jim, do you have anybody? Because Carrie, and I say this every month, Carrie Arsenal and Wendy Walker, they'd rather not serve, they would like to help.
Okay.
I, you know what, I need to put this out to see if there's anyone else, because right now it's you and Laura.
And we need one more.
One more.
Correct.
You know what, I will put it out in an email blast, I usually put that for vacancies and I forgot, so.
I'll make a note and see what I, who I can come up with.
Okay.
And I'm good with it, yes.
All right, so we will make a motion to table the Roxbury Museum Board of Trustees.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have the Conservation Commission, a new four-year term. Ron Fawness said that he would like to be reappointed. If you want to make a motion for that.
Make a motion to appoint Ron Fawness to four-year term from July 1, 2020 to 6/30 of 2024.
Who, second, all in favor? Aye. And we have a Conservation Commission alternate, same thing, four-year term. Tony Benevigna, he, um, he actually filled a vacancy, so now this is for a full four-year term.
Good.
So we have a motion for that?
So moved, yes.
All right, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Recreation Commission, some of these were filling up vacancies, so now these are full four-year terms. Recreation Commission, I have Mike Foreman, Dennis Adelletti, and Rob Hibbert. I guess we could do all three at the same time.
Certainly, make a motion for Mike Foreman, Dennis Aderley, and.
Adelletti.
Adelletti, and.
Rob Hibbert.
Rob Hibbert.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so the Zoning Board of Appeals, this is a vacancy that Judith Kelly resigned, which we thanked her and recognized last month. And her, her commission expires on December 31st, 2021. So what the chairman has asked is that an alternate be bumped up, Doug Lewis, to fill that unexpired term. He's an alternate right now.
Correct, yes.
So would you like to make a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So Doug Lewis, so, so we, I don't have anyone to put in the alternate position at the moment. So I would make a mo, unless you do. No, anybody offhand?
No.
Okay, I will make a motion to table that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Russ, are you there?
I'm here, you hear me?
Oh, okay, yeah, um, yep, can you, we're, we're through, getting through the agenda with the appointments.
No, I've been on, um, I think my mic has been giving me trouble all day, but can you hear me?
Yes, barely.
Yeah, that's what my clients are saying.
Okay. All right, anyway, we're on the Special Constables. RC 88, this is for a year, and Kurt Yovan would like to be reappointed for that.
So.
I have a mo, motion to reappoint him as a special constable.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, the rest of these, and we can do them all at once, it's RC 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, and 95. And these are just for May 1st to September 30th, mostly for the parks. It's myself, Russ Dorenzo, John Hopkins, Jim Conway, Art Atunis, he is a resident that lives down near the Falls, and John Cody.
Make a motion to appoint Special Constable 90 through 95 for six-month term.
Right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's my number, Barbara?
You're 93. RC 93.
All right.
And Russ, you are RC 91, Roxbury Constable 91.
That's my next password.
Geez, tell everybody, all right. Okay, so, um, under business, oh, I'm sorry, we have a municipal compliance officer that I've been, that all of the towns have been requested to appoint somebody through this COVID experience that we're all going through. Anything that has to do with restaurants, et cetera, you know, the health department is really on top of that. And this goes for other things. For example, I've gotten complaints about people not wearing masks. I have different feelings on that because everybody thinks that everybody's got to be wearing a mask all the time, and that is not the case, but I, I would like to appoint for this time period, there isn't, it's just an indefinite time period, would be Bernie Meehan, he's our emergency management director, and he could certainly take on that. It cannot be myself.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bernie Meehan to that position.
Second.
Okay, like I said, I don't have a term on there, it's just through this time period. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And when I find out a time period, I can go back and, and add that and let you know. Thank you. Okay, under business, Roxbury Shapog Seniors. So there was a lot of back and forth, and I just put this in here. First of all, I want to congratulate all of our, all of Shapog Seniors, especially the Roxbury Seniors. We have all of their names posted on the front lawn. We did purchase signs about congratulating the entire class of 2020. I have to congratulate the principal and the superintendent because at first there was not going to be any type of gathering, and now they put together something that's really nice because many of the seniors felt like they were just totally losing out. They were gonna be going to get their caps and gowns and get their picture taken when they picked it up, and that was basically it. So now, Big Wave is part of, part of it, they're going to be having a drive-in ceremony up at the Bridgewater Fairgrounds. There's going to be a big screen, they're having a parade with, obviously in the cars, et cetera. And I don't know that anybody else is going to be allowed on the fairgrounds, except those are parents, families of the graduates. So they will have a graduation video. I know that the students wanted to be called out of their cars, go up onto the stage area, get their diplomas, and then be able to stay up there in seats six feet apart. And that wasn't allowed at the time, and who knows, maybe it'll change by June 20, whatever, what is it, June 20th?
20th.
But I, I don't know if that's gonna change. Anyway, it sounds like a nice thing, so they are, uh, they've at least made an effort to make a big deal out of it. So I was just really reporting on that and did want to go on the record that the selectmen are congratulating all of our graduates. It's been a different year, they'll certainly have things to talk about for years to come. Okay, I added this, I mean, this has been on before, the fire marshal pulled tanks permitting. And Russ, you had questioned it, that, you know, we never went and got permits, et cetera, but the fire marshal reminded me that it is part of the state building and fire code, and it happened in 2018.
Yeah.
And so they're just following through on it, and they send samples, and she and John Blaney worked together on that, so. But, like you said, I don't know if people know they have to get a permit because we didn't have to for so long.
You should do an email blast because they did change it, they didn't let the towns know.
No.
And a lot of towns are up in arms because there's a liability, but I guess the state, state decided, and I agree with the state, people shouldn't be pulling tanks without somebody there to verify it doesn't leak. Because a lot of people pull their tanks, they leak, and they don't report it.
Yeah.
And it's a big deal in this area because we're all on Wells.
Yep, so I.
I agree with it, but people should know about it.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a process? Barbara, is there a form that they, is online that people know they need to fill it out and schedule it with the fire marshal?
That is a, it's a good question, I don't know what the form is, here, wait a minute, she, she gave me some information on it, where is it?
Where are you?
Where am I? I'm out in the field.
Colorado.
That's not Mallory Road.
No.
Did you move?
Well, um, let's see, it says, it's stuff, the fuel tank, blah, blah, blah. It's really not saying where they get this, but it's all from the fire marshal, so they must have to get it from the fire marshal.
Nobody knows.
No, so if somebody comes in for building, like I said, she and John work on it, the building official, yeah, no, they would get the permit, they would get the permit from the building official, if they will, but they.
If they don't know to get it, sometimes you pull a tank, you don't even know to get it.
Right, so I.
You're not building anything, you're pulling a tank.
Correct.
Right.
So I will let, um, it is in both of their codes, the fire ma, the fire code and the building code right now. So I will let, I will put an email out about it. I, I don't know what the cost is, I don't know that there is a cost because it doesn't say anything here, and we haven't had it.
Well, some towns charge a permit fee, some towns don't.
I mean, if they have a problem, they gotta pay to get their soil cleaned and everything, so, I don't know. I will find out.
We need a form they fill out, and just to make them aware they need to contact the fire marshal and let them know how to do that, some people don't even know who the fire marshal is.
Right. Okay. Yep, because she says she's gone out, and she has checked on them, you know, when they're gonna get told, so. It was nice to know. Okay, Code Red, we currently have Blackboard Connect, and Jimmy Harbitt and I sat through a presentation with Code Red, and I'd like to, to switch over to them, I think they're, you know, they've got some really great things. One of the things is, you know, in any kind of an emergency, it will flash across our computer screens, it will let us know if somebody is going to, obviously, somebody's got to tell us what's going on, you know, if there's a problem in one of the offices. But it also has some other really nice features, and it's less than what we're paying right now. So I'd like to get that started on July 1, I'm really just asking your permission to do that. I'd be signing a contract for a year, but I already signed a contract for Blackboard, and like I said, it's, it's like half the price, and it is, Code Red is what the state uses also.
So moved.
Good with me.
Okay, great. So move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
That I can switch, thank you. All right. Cardinal Engineering, um, let me get rid of some of this paper. We, thank you, it went through the wetlands, went through wetlands for Davenport. You know that we applied for a, hi Cynthia. Applied for the local bridge money, and we were not awarded, but then the state said that they were awarding the money from the prior year, and that we would have an opportunity again to go forward in July. And all of our paperwork is there, but we have to do a couple of things, and one of the things is, we went through wetlands, and then we also have to have a public information meeting, and I will try and get that scheduled, you know, by the end of the summer. I'm sorry, I should try and do it in June or July, actually. So the other thing that I wanted to do is that, Russ, you were telling me, and I, I don't know why, but about the bolt, there's a bolt on Minor Bridge. Do you remember that?
Yeah, it's the joint, it's the joint, it's the, where the bridge meets the road, there's a joint there that has deteriorated. It's allows water to go through and is rusting the bolts under the bridge. What I don't understand is, we just did that bridge.
Yes, I know it.
And there's another bridge I was reading about, and I'm like, we just, I think it was on Falls Road.
I know, we just did this, and we closed up that expansion joint because it wasn't working. And it's actually, I don't know how the water's going through because there is no expansion joint there anymore, it was just paved over. There's a bolt there.
That's, that's the problem, it's getting through, and that joint needs to be redone. Not a big deal, we should just do it.
Yeah, no, I will.
I did go look, it is leaking, not bad. I think they tend to make things sound worse than they are, but not just Cardinal, ever, all the engineers, because they have a liability, and they, they can't make things sound good. But they're right, if you allow it to go on, it's, it's gonna deteriorate three times more rapid than it would if you fix it.
No, we have to fix it, I'm gonna go back to the people that did it, but, so, what I don't understand is, so where the expansion joint was, that was all paved over, the joint, that whole metal expansion piece was taken out. So how is the water going through, it's going through the pavement?
Yeah, well, pavement's not, pavement is porous, the water goes through pavement.
Yeah.
There's supposed to be a geotextile liner under the pavement to prevent the water from going any further. It's hard to assess that liner if you don't remove the pavement. What most people do is they just redo the joint with the special, it's a gooey, tarry material that you just put over.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
In the document from Cardinal.
Yeah.
Second paragraph, I don't see anything about replacing blots, B-L-O-T-S. Are we talking blots or bolts?
Bolts.
Bolts.
Okay.
I know, and he, I, I asked him, I said, where did, where did that come from, was it from him? And he just went back to the other one that is up the road, that's the Culver, not this big bridge, so. I, that's what I was asking, who told me about this? And, and Russ, you said we need to replace that, and I can't even remember who did it. So I asked him, Tim Semola from Cardinal, I said, did this information come from you? And he said, I, I don't see anything about that in the reports from the state, so. We're all confused, but we do, I, I am confused, I'm not confused anymore. I know I have to do it, but I didn't remember who told me I had to do that, so. I was trying to find the information exactly where it was, but it is near that expansion joint. So it later, um, in that, it, he says, last fall, we left it that you were going to have us assess the remaining bridges in town to complete the townwide report. We did six of the 14 smaller bridges, leaving eight. You also have six larger bridges that I attached the latest letter from the state, the federal bridges. So of the six, five are in fair, and they are in need of maintenance, and it's important to address these. So just going back, you and Jim, Russ and Jim, you said that you wanted to go look and assess, and then give that report back to Cardinal. Are we still doing that, or should we just hand this over to them?
No, later, later on, I believe, you know, I'm getting old too. I believe Jim and I agreed that we should just have Carver, Cardinal do that, am I correct in that, Jim?
Yes, the ones that Russ and I were, wanted to take a look at weren't really the federal bridges. We were looking at Battle Swamp, Botswor Hill, you know, the stuff that needed some masonry work, and I'm not gonna go near a, a Weller's Bridge or Minor Bridge, you know, there's no way we can do that.
Yeah, we, we actually, I believe, voted on that, Barbara.
We're looking at the culvert type pipes and parapets and concrete work that, you know, and Russ and I can.
Right.
Do that, easy.
Okay. All right.
We were talking about everything but the major ones.
The big ones, no way, nope.
And I will tell you that Leonard is working on the Botswor Hill to update their, their application so I can get it back in for that July time period.
Yes, yeah.
So there on that.
Are we good for Davenport, that's gonna go forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's.
One of the, one of the things we have to have is a, a public information meeting to show what we are doing there.
Okay.
And I can schedule that anytime, it's gonna be by Zoom, we'll probably have you and I and three people there, but it's something that I have to check off and say, yes, we're doing it.
Yep.
So I will let you know when that is. Okay, Shred It. Shred It is coming on June 27th, between, from 9:00 to 12:00 up at the transfer station.
You skipped Mira for a reason, or?
She should skip Mira.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, you know what I'm, see, you know what I did? Mira. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong, I'm, I'm looking at a, um, an agenda that I scribbled all over. So, yes, Mira, they did not, even though we voted that we would.
Join.
Take all of our trash still, a lot of the towns didn't do it. And so they are going to work on closing this plant, and we will be spending $145 a ton at some point because they are going to be shipping it out of state. So we've gone from burying trash at that Hartford landfill that they covered to having it burned at this trash-to-energy plant, to going back to burying it in other states because they're gonna send it out on rail. If the state does not come through with some money, and they, they figured that the state has until the end of August, and it's, it's 330 million in general obligation bonds, and so it's up in the air. Right now, we are, we all got, well, not all, because we're all different, but Roxbury's gonna be paying $91 a ton for this next fiscal year, and I don't know where it's going from then. So it really depends what the state does, and they have till August to say, yes, they will help us, and then that means that the plant will be rebuilt, and we will still be using the trash-to-energy plant. If they say no, then they're gonna start building rail stations to, Mira will still be collecting the trash, but they will be putting it on railway out, so. And they're gonna be burying our garbage in other states, you know, Pennsylvania, Ohio, and Virginia, and probably New York by 2023. So, so maybe we should see what the state can do to help, although, they got a lot of bills right now.
Yeah, that's right.
So anyway, um.
Jeep has never had a good, solid waste management plan. For not looking into the future.
Okay, I just lost my. This is ridiculous.
Blowin' the wind? Where are you that it's sunny, it's cloudy here?
Looks like it's gonna storm here. All right, this is a little crazy, I just had my agenda, now I don't have my agenda.
Jim, what's your next on the agenda?
Is Shred It next?
Shred It, yep.
Or the Heritage, I'm, I'm sorry. So Shred It, yes, June 27th. We're bringing Shred It back, they're gonna start, we had to stop all of that because of COVID, so from 9:00 to 12:00. People can bring, it is not for businesses, it is strictly for residents, and we'll get the information out when we can. All right, the other thing was, um, this rain garden. I know we talked about it before, there's a grant, it's gonna be, it's a rain garden by the Northwest Conservation District. They want to do one here, they've done one in Bridgewater, they, and they want to do it in Roxbury, we said that they could. Some people in the historic district wanted it over where the water is pools by the old Christmas tree.
It is a rain garden.
Huh?
That's what rain gardens do, they pool the water.
No, but they, this woman who's in charge of it says that is not, it's not supposed to be so that it's drenched all the time, and that is not a good spot, they went and looked at it.
Right, it's wet.
It's flooding, it's in the center of town, et cetera. They said that they would like to either have it at the town hall, the library, and someone said, you know what, they have the garden, community vegetable garden that's near the senior center, and it would work over in that area. And so I'm gonna, I don't know where else it could go, but.
Well, I mean.
It would also help the students to go look and learn about it.
Well, I'm confused here, because rain gardens are, their purpose is to renovate stormwater. You don't just dig a hole in the ground, and it's gotta be something where stormwater is going into a rain garden. And it's not flushing into a stream, it gets held up, and it gets absorbed slowly as opposed to running in, and that's the right way to do it, what you're talking about is, it makes no sense to me.
Well, this is, this is what she said, she said, I drove around the area, meaning that's center of town right there, a couple of weeks ago after heavy rains, to see for myself what was happening. It appears to me that the water naturally goes to the properties around Route 67, and that there are wetlands that I could see from the road on those sites. I do not think a rain garden is the answer to the perceived problems there, as the ground may be too wet for infiltration. And, so, you see DOT out here.
Does it have to be in the center of town?
No, that's why I was saying maybe, um, they thought, um, near the vegetable garden, if, it could be at the town hall. I don't know.
Think about it, I mean, if we're gonna do this, we should do it right, and not just throw one up. One, one place that bothers me is the River Road Preserve, where all that water runs down the hill into a pond, and that's part of that pond's problem, that would be a perfect place for a rain garden, because it would slow the water down and naturally renovate it before it went into pond. And that would be a place where kids could go see, I mean, you could have a sign up. That's one place I'm thinking of, but if you give me time, there's many places in town where we have runoff that, that I would love to see better, better controls, and rain gardens are a great control. But, you know, can't be gushing water, but if you let me think about it, I think it's a great thing to go for.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
And you're saying River Road?
Yeah, the River Road Preserve.
Yeah.
Where you walk down to the pond.
Yeah.
That road there? That, where you're walking down the road to the pond?
Yeah, and I know that, but, so, uh, okay, I mean, I don't see anybody really seeing it, or, but whatever.
Well, that's the purpose, if you want to dig a hole and put nice plants in it, that's what it is. But it's really supposed to be the. But it's really supposed to be to renovate stormwater. Before it enters a surface water body.
Well, we also have around the museum here, you know, where the water, it's pooling there, but it might be an area that could pull it away from there.
No, that's not why it pulls there. That's wetland. It's poorly drained soil. It pulls there because it can't go downward. A rain garden makes no sense. Anywhere along the green or in that area. Totally would make no sense.
What about the vegetable garden near the senior center?
I don't see a stormwater issue there.
Well, that was suggested by somebody in one of the garden clubs. Okay. All right. If you would think about that because they're waiting for something because they would like to start designing it.
Okay.
All right. Okay, thank you. Okay, COVID-19. It's just a lot of things that have been happening with that. And I started a reopen Roxbury committee that met once. And, you know, closing everything down was pretty easy, but opening up is a lot more work and we, to open this town hall, we have to be ready to figure out how we're going to protect the employees and the public who come in. So I've been talking about it and what I would like to be able to do is we have been working remote. I mean, I'm in here a lot. People take, you know, turns coming in, the assessor, tax collector, Judy, Kim, Jimmy is in and Peter's in a lot, John Blaney's in a lot. It's just a different time. So it hasn't been totally closed. It's been totally closed to the public. But we have been floating in and out. So what I would like to do, and we have been working on how we're going to fit some of the things here to protect the public and the employees with, you know, we have to have like a one-way in and out. It's like maybe one way in the, the front of the town hall and you can go out the back. We figured out something for the area of the town clerk, the assessor and the tax collectors section, but we're not totally finished with that. And worked on something that would work in land use to keep people keep people away from each other. And it's going to be a real learning experience because we're going to have to have signs outside on the door that people cannot come in without masks. We can work in here without masks unless we come within six feet of, of each other, but we're pretty separated here, which is nice. And the ones that are, I mean, even Jimmy and Peter are separated. But they're family, they're around each other a lot, but there, there's at least six feet in between them. But we have to keep the public away from them. So I do have some, some things designed and had the fire marshal in here the other day, how we, you gotta have a, you know, a stop point that people cannot come in. Because we need to open the town hall by July so people can come in and pay their taxes. And so what I would like to do is continue to work remote this week, next week. I would like to have all the employees back the third week. And but close to the, close to the public. And that we can meet and people can know and find out what we have for them, for their protection, what, what is going to be expected. I mean, we're going to have to make sure that we all wipe down counters, doorknobs and everything. And we also are going to be able, we have to hire someone to come in, maybe daily. Maybe we're going to only have the bathrooms for employees only to keep the public out. There's just a lot to take into consideration and then open it. You know, effective July 1, because people are going to want to come in. And, and you know what? I'm not finished talking with the people, the actual employees. But, I mean, that's my thoughts and I know I've talked with the library because they want to open part-time and I had Geraldine and the emergency management director and several of us, Kim, Judy, Kim Barron, you know, to try and figure out what we should do to make this place safe. So I will keep you in the loop, but you know, the governor keeps coming out with different executive orders about how many people can be together or not together and it's just trying to keep up with all of those little things, as you know. So one of the things also is we have the Chapag Soccer Group. They would like to start using Herbert Park to have a camp. Well, there's going to be some information on camps supposedly by the 6th of June, summer camps. Some towns are planning them. And there's just a lot of liability issues. And, but, you know, people need to be able to do things. They do. We also have, you know, Jason Conway has written, he's got a plan for trying to open the Little League where, you know, there's going to be social distancing. There's only going to be 10 kids at a time and you know, when practices can be, et cetera. And that could start June 20th, when some of this is supposed to open up. Well, we have to, I have the Chapag Valley Bible Church. When are you going to let us in there? Well, we haven't allowed the public in here. So I'm asking, you know, you two for some direction on, we already said we were not going to rent out the park this year. And, you know, open the kitchen and all of that, but what do you think about opening, you know, for, for some of these sports things and for the recreation, give them some guidance? I don't think we can close the park. The park hasn't been closed because people walk there every day.
I think based on the science and people seem to only want to listen to science at certain times. Based on the science, outside stuff is fine, especially when the temperature is over 77 degrees. And if people are uncomfortable, then they shouldn't go to these things. That's my feeling. I think outdoor stuff is fine. I don't understand mask on a beach. I really don't, but the science isn't there to support that, but I get it. This is a terrible thing. You can't be stupid about it and just jump right back into the way we were. I'm, I'm with you on town hall, going slow. No reason to rush. The town hall employees have been doing their jobs.
Yep.
Boxes are getting collected, dog licenses. I just sent mine in, Peter, if you're still here. You know, the transfer station, you came up with ways to do it without having to go to town hall. I really don't see a reason to have to go to town hall. Things could be done online. Internet filing, like the courts, the courts, you could do internet filings now. So I think you're, you're in the right direction. Outdoors and, you know, I'm interested in what Jim has say. I, I think we could loosen up. Absolutely. People need to get out.
I totally agree, but I do also, the bathrooms need to remain closed. The kitchen needs to remain closed.
Good point.
Because you Anything outside and leave it up to the, the group to govern themselves as far as distancing and how they set it up. You can't be policing every little activity.
Nope.
If somebody comes to you with a plan, have them submit a plan like Jason's going to submit what his plan is.
No, he did already. It's very good. I have no issues with it.
And then we make sure that our, we just appointed Bernie, that they follow the plan. Which they will. But all the kitchen stuff is closed and renting the pavilion, no point, no. This is for sports groups, recreation, stuff like that. No weddings, no parties, no birthday parties.
Yep.
Can't control a birthday party, but you can control the Chapag Little League. And
So this Joe Abdella, who is in charge of the Chapag Soccer. And he's saying, you know, we know all the rules. We're only allowed to have 10 players in a group. The instructors, the parents, the coaches will need to wear a mask. Not sure how we are going to stage everything, but we want to know, before I make a plan, can we use the park?
I say yes.
Okay.
Definitely yes.
All right, I will tell him that.
Yep.
And then they're looking for fifth grade aloha. And you know what? I said, you know, that's another thing. If the parents and the teachers and everyone is on board and they know about the social distancing, et cetera. I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Me neither.
No problem whatsoever. It's
They're going to have a, they're going to have a, what do you call it? Scavenger hunt also with the, with the fifth graders. So, and that's all around town. It's on your own time. And I think that that's great.
You got a good
Paul is doing that.
A good group of parents. They will make sure that everybody
Yeah.
So, no, open it up. Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, the 2020 census, really, you know, the town's doing really well. With the number of people, but it would be great if we could get 100% people to respond to that. So easy. I keep sending it out. I mean, we're hitting 70%, which is really quite good. But I will keep bugging people to do that.
Good.
I did send some information about, out about the bridge closures and emergency services. I hope you got that information about the what, over 133 in June, totally shut down for a couple of weekends, the dates. And I will, you know, let people know about that again, just to make sure that people are aware of it, just, you know, they're going to have to go all the way around. And it's kind of a pain, but it's going to be totally closed. So Sarah, do you get that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I want to, and Todd's on also. I did send it out in the email blast. So anyway, going down here, the fire marshal's report, I did send that to you, copies of it. Said that, so one of the things they have here, she explained in her report that the permit is pulled with the building official in his office and then he contacts, the tank company calls a fire marshal with the date of the scheduled pull and she goes out and checks it all out.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you put that in the packet?
Yes. Oh, no, I emailed it to you because I just got it.
Okay.
I'm sorry. So the whole, the whole outline is there.
Right.
Um, so they have the Katie Building Pizza Restaurant. She had site visits. They were complete. The information was passed on to building and health. The restaurant opened and she's doing something there that was required by code. She said a preliminary review is made of the plans for an addition to the firehouse. Once an official permit is pulled, a full review will be completed. No additional information has been received. She spoke with Bernie Man and myself and offered several suggestions for precautions for the entrance to town office spaces. Because Bernie was saying maybe we should be getting some Dutch doors so that there's a hard stop. And I said, I don't think so. I think some of these doors are fire rated, which she said they were and it would be very, very costly if we were going to replace a fire rated door. So anyway, she sent me some other options and we're going to be, we, we're already going to move on those. And then they want investigation of fire, brush fire in the woods. Burned approximately eight acres. It was started accidentally by a father having a small campfire with his four-year-old daughter. However, I have to compliment the fire department and all the towns that they called, that the chief called because it was late in the afternoon. It could have gone into the evening hours and it was, I, I, it didn't look like it was an easy place to, to get to. So to compliment them on getting that out. And she was there for that. I don't have the resident troopers report for May. He's usually really good about that. So I don't know if you have any other, anything that you would like to add to this agenda before we break and go into executive session?
I have nothing.
Nothing.
Okay. So the, the, the board is going to go into executive session and people are going to have to leave. Inviting Sarah Lorry to stay. And I want to thank you all for joining us. At 8:43, Russ Dorenzo made a motion to come out of executive session, second by Jim Conway. All favor, aye, so.
I, I went out when, before you made the motion to go in and that was at 8:12. I left at 8:12.
Okay.
So it was the same people that made the motion to go in?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Okay. So we had, we, some discussion on emergency services and stipends. It's a request from Sarah Lorry, the chief of the ambulance association. Explaining all of the extra work that she has taken on this COVID COVID situation. And was looking to possibly be getting, would like us to consider because she's gone above and beyond her role as chief of EMS to get a, an additional stipend for this year. So we had the discussion.
Yeah, I make a motion to give Sarah Lorry 2,500 for her work on COVID for this year.
And I'd like to add to that motion that this is anticipated to be re, what's the word, from FEMA.
Reimbursed.
Reimbursed from FEMA funds.
Correct.
This is the initial step and we expect to be reimbursed through funds from FEMA.
Correct. So is that, then will you second that?
Second.
Second. Okay, any further discussion?
Good to go.
Good to go? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the second person that was talked about was our emergency management director. And I wanted to offer him a stipend right now. It's a volunteer position. He's been doing it for 22 years. And has taken on a tremendous, as a volunteer for 22 years. And has taken on quite a bit in this COVID operation, which you know, the, the ambulance chief has certainly spelled out. And, you know, has just gone above and beyond. It's taken on, probably works 10 hours a week on this, helping me. He's also part of our reopen Roxbury. He's our representative to the health district, et cetera. So we made a motion. I'm not going to make the motion.
I'll make a motion to give Bernie Man a 2,500 $2,500 stipend for this year to be evaluated each year after.
And with anticipation of being reimbursed from FEMA.
Okay.
Jim, you second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
I, I, I'm just going to add that I think that it should be more than that. And so I probably will be voting against it for that very reason. I think that he should probably get the same stipend as the ambulance and fire chief in this instance, which would be reevaluated every year.
Um, okay. I have, maybe I'm confused around a different topic. I've got Sarah Lorry is getting 2,500 also.
Sarah's getting 25, that's a separate thing. Now we got, we got another person, emergency management director.
Okay.
Sarah's getting the additional on top of the stipend.
Oh, okay, that's, that's, that was my confusion.
Bernie doesn't get paid as emergency manager. Barbara is asking that we give him the same stipend as the chief of police and the ambulance chief. And Jim and I, we all discussed it and Jim and I felt that 5,000 was going a little too, too much in the beginning to start. I agree with Jim that it's too much to start out with. And I also agree that we can't get into setting precedent of paying our volunteers because then they're not volunteers anymore. I have no problem with saying a thank you, but I, I think $2,500 should be something that somebody who's a true volunteer should be happy with.
I agree.
Well, I would just say that a precedent has been set because we do give this tax abatement, et cetera, to our, to our other volunteers. And I'm not saying they don't deserve it because they certainly do, but it, but it has, it has been set.
Duly noted. Let's vote. I gotta eat. I haven't eaten all day.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose for the reasons I stated. I oppose for the reasons I stated.
Motion passed.
Yep.
Okay.
No, you still got one more thing, Russ. You got okay, we have, we got a letter regarding possibly purchasing one or two pieces of property in Roxbury with maps and feasibility plans for different subdivisions from Tim Tierney from Clem Real Estate, seeing if the town would be interested in using this for low income housing. And so the board discussed this and did not feel that the town should be purchasing land for this purpose that hopefully that he would work with a private developer or come up with another plan. We have been wishing that there was a Roxbury Housing Authority that was established and no one has come forward since it's not a town government entity. But this would be the time for, if anyone's interested, to come forward and have that discussion with Mr. Tierney. So.
I agree. Raise the funds. The town supports affordable housing, zoning has regulations ready to go. Nobody's saying we're opposed to affordable housing. We're saying that we're, we're not going to just go buy property with no plan and the prices are way too high. The, the land that they're talking about is very rough and it would be very expensive to develop an affordable housing development on those types of steep slope sites.
Okay.
Okay.
So suck, somebody make a motion to
Decline.
Do we need, he didn't make an offer. He just said, if you're interested, do we need a motion? We discussed it. I don't, do we need a motion?
Wouldn't hurt.
All right.
Okay, Jim, go ahead.
Make a motion to decline Tim Tierney's offer of making this land available to the town for low income housing. We declined.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Julie, I hope that we get, you know, in there that hoping that a housing authority can, you know.
I'm going back and writing that after I did the motion. I've got second.
Okay.
Okay. So, okay.
Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Bye.
All right.